Indeed, we do. Calling the meeting to order on July 1st, 2021, as we turn the calendar. Let the record show that we have a quorum. We have four of us here tonight. So all these that are here today are the what we're expecting for this month's meeting. We'll move on to the minutes. Anyone have a chance to review the June meeting minutes? Any edits, requests, changes, nothing? Motion?
I move to approve the June minutes.
Second?
First and a second. Everyone in favor of approving the minutes from June, say aye. And it's approved. Thank you, guys. Organizational and procedural items. I'll read the chairman's preamble. Don't have it memorized yet. Thanks, Madeline, for providing it. The zoning board of appeals is charged with the responsibility of granting variance variance ordinance requirements after determining whether there exists an undue hardship upon an applicant if a variance is not granted. In determining whether or not to grant a variance, the board shall apply the criteria specified in the city code of ordinances to the facts of each case. The board further hears applications where it is alleged that administrative official erred in final order requirement or decision based on or made in the enforcement of the zoning ordinance. The zoning board of appeals does not create zoning nor can it change zoning. This board has no authority to grant variances for use, density, or height. Matters brought before the zoning board of appeals are to be concerned only with variances from development standards placed on property by the zoning ordinance. Final decisions of the zoning board of appeals may be appealed by petitioning the Superior Court of DeKalb County within thirty days after the decision here is rendered. All right. There is no unfinished business, to my knowledge, so we'll proceed with new business. First case is ZBA twenty-one dash fourteen. The homeowners Carol and Rachi Sheerheart seek the following variance from chapters twenty-seven, section fifty-eight to allow encroachment of six feet into the side setback for the construction of a garage addition and a variance from chapter twenty-seven, section two-six-eight, to allow a retaining wall in that side setback. Staff, would you give us the details of that?
Good evening, everyone. So the first case on our agenda tonight is ZBA twenty-one dash fourteen. As you said, it's to allow a garage and a retaining wall to encroach into the required ten-foot side yard setback. This is a survey of the property. The property line is outlined in red. And as you can see, it tapers significantly. I've got some dimensions to illustrate that. It's a hundred and forty feet at the street. It's a hundred and five feet wide in the area where they would construct the garage. And then it's forty feet wide at the rear property line. So that's a reduction of around seventy percent. There's also a twenty-foot drainage easement approximately thirty feet behind the house. So that also sort of bisects the property. This is a photo, a screenshot taken from the city's GIS map. You can see the little top topography lines that they might not be super visible. But essentially, it illustrates that there's a twelve-foot drop from the front of the house to the rear. So essentially, they have like a daylighted basement. The entire backyard is on a slope. This is the site plan. The red lines indicate the outline of the garage. The black lines indicate where the retaining walls would go. The garage is about four feet from the property line. And this is a drawing, a little bit closer, that the applicant provided, giving the dimensions of the garage and showing where the new foundation would be placed. These are the existing conditions. The photo on the left, the location of the tent is essentially where the proposed garage would be located. And then the photo on the right is illustrating the topography. As you can see, it drops down significantly, and they have a series of retaining walls. The retaining wall variance is to essentially replace and reconfigure that existing retaining wall there. It couldn't support a new garage. It's already sort of cracking, so they'll have to replace it. This property, as you've seen on the previous slides, is severely limited due to topography and the shape of the lot. The shape of the lot is very unique. None of the other properties in this part of the neighborhood have this kind of shape. They're all fairly rectangular. So it's a very unique condition. And you can see on the right-hand side of the screen, I've drawn a very crude illustration highlighted in blue. Sort of if the eastern property line were parallel to the western, they would have about thirty-five feet of additional width, and then a variance wouldn't be necessary in that case. So it's just to illustrate sort of the hardship there. And then additionally, you saw the photos that there is significant topography. They really couldn't move it anywhere else on the lot. Number one, they're sort of constricted by that drainage easement. And then the number of retaining walls that would require it to move it back and over outside of the setbacks to where it didn't encroach. It just logistically wouldn't make sense. And staff also doesn't anticipate any adverse impacts. It'll be ninety feet from the street. It's not something that will be visible or visually impact any any other properties. So staff does recommend approval of this request, subject to two conditions. The first is essentially tying it to the site plan, and then the second is requiring them to commence the work within two years of the granting of the variance. I'm available for questions if you have any.
I have just a clarification. I'm curious why this staff recommendation or the condition allows two years to commence the the construction, whereas I feel like most of the recommendations required a one-year commencement.
Yeah, so we've been the variances that were approved last year with the one-year commencement. The pandemic has affected a lot of things construction-wise, you know, cost of lumber, you know, getting surveyors out, getting work done. So because of the pandemic, we just think we should give people a little bit of an extra cushion.
Interesting. Yeah, makes sense. Anything else? Great. Thanks, Madeline. The sheriffs like to come up and present their case and tell us why you're requesting the variance tonight. I do have your name right, right? Good.
Well, the reason I we were interested in constructing it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you have to speak your name and address for the record. I know we have it here. We've talked about it.
I'm sorry, Carol.
My name is Rocky Shearhardt. I go by Rock.
So we would like to construct a detached garage for an extra vehicle that we have. And there are several reasons we were interested in doing this. One is to protect the vehicle and extend the life of the vehicle, keep it out of the elements, deter theft or crime. Basically, provide some extra storage. As you saw, the design has a bump out that would be served as a workshop or storage for lawn equipment, trash, receptacles, et cetera. And then finally, to basically rehab that area and really beautify that area, because you can tell from the photos that it's really been neglected. So that area is already, I guess, elevated with existing walls and fill. And so it makes sense to put the garage there and take advantage of that existing structure that is there. I'd like to thank the staff actually for being patient with all my questions and guiding us through the process, explaining all the ordinances so that we could provide information to to you all for the review.
Great.
I don't know if anybody has any questions. I'm happy to answer any.
Well, yeah, we'll get to that in a minute, but thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of this variance, either online or in person? We're monitoring online. Are we monitoring online tonight? I guess we are, sort of.
If you'd like to speak in public comment, please raise your hand. Zoom up.
Great, thank you.
I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay, great. Anyone want to speak in opposition to the variance tonight? I don't think there was any. I know there was no pre-submissions, so less someone's on.
Spoken to the neighbor that would be affected and actually that space between the houses, they're actually interested in making a little pathway there to their gate, gate to the backyard. And so we plan to, you know, coordinate with them and work with them if they are interested in doing it at the same time and coordinating that effort.
Okay, great. We'll officially close the the public comment part, but we'll open it for questions. The board has any questions for the applicants? No questions?
Well, I haven't pulled my microphone.
I was gonna say, I expect one from you.
I know, I appreciate it. So thank you for talking about your neighbor, because I was, I did have some concern, because you know, we talked about it's not a hardship, but it is a third garage, like a third car garage. Most houses in Dunwoody are built with, or most houses in general, two-car garages. So yeah, so it's a third garage. So we have Bay, we have to think about that. So but your neighbors, because it looks like you've got, I'm trying to pull it up, because we seem to, can the city pull up? The, Madeline, do you mind pulling up the 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 structure, I mean, the site plan, please? Because is there an actual construction? Is there an actual architectural rendering, or is it just the hand drawing? That's fine.
Part of what we were trying to work with the planning committee on.
Right.
That is, you know, fifteen hundred.
Oh, no, 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 no. I just want to make sure I hadn't missed it in the packet. No, I just want to make sure. Yeah.
You know, I'm working with the builder. I mean, I've been talking to a builder.
Architecturally, we want to make it up. Looks like it's part of the original house. I mean, we went the same architecture as the house, so it looks.
So have brick. So tell us a little bit about the exterior, please.
Front, same type of roofing, hip roof, same shingles, same color of painting. So it looks like it never was an addition. It looks like it would be part of designed altogether.
And a nice garage door.
All right, thank you. Yeah, all right. Thank you. That, because I was kind of unclear. All right, that's what I really wanted to ask about. Thank you.
Anyone else? No?
I just make one other comment. I know that we are allowed two years, but we're more interested in starting sooner, so as long as there are builders available and.
Wood. Yeah, exactly. Good.
Oh, it all, yeah, all of it is, but I appreciate that extension for those reasons, because a consideration these days.
Sure, sure. Board, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the request for a variance from chapter twenty-seven, section fifty-eight, and chapter twenty-seven, section two-sixty-eight, to allow a garage and retaining walls to encroach into the side setback, subject to the following conditions as provided by staff. One, construction must be in substantial compliance with the submitted drawing and site plan, which is in appendix B. And two, if construction has not commenced within two years of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Tara, seconds?
Um, I have a question. Sorry, I got out of order. I apologize. Well, when we read the motion, it reminded me, and I'll just address this to the city. We don't see anything about the retaining wall. Usually, we see, you know, what the retaining wall is going to look like or some materials. Are you confident? I'll just ask the city. Are you confident that you'll follow this bill to make sure the retaining wall is in line with what the city approves?
That's good call, actually.
So our code does have aesthetic requirements for retaining walls, so they'll be held to all of those minimum requirements for design and such.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion pass. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Now, that was, that was All right, we're on to case ZBA twenty-one dash sixteen. Daniel Ginberg, property owner at ten forty-one Winding Ridge Court, Dunwoody, three oh three three eight. Request a variance from section sixteen dash seven eight to allow a new deck to encroach in the seventy-five-foot stream buffer. Madeline, give us an overview on this one.
I just want to check real quick. Ginger, Daniel Ginberg was going to attend virtually this evening. Would you mind moving him over to a panelist if he's in the meeting?
He's just been promoted.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much, Ginger. I really appreciate it. Okay, so the next case on our agenda is ZBA twenty-one dash sixteen. The homeowner at ten forty-one Winding Ridge Court requested variance to construct a new deck in the seventy-five-foot stream buffer. This is a survey showing what was previously there. It's actually in the process of being demolished right now. But this is what was there. Highlighted in red is the buffer encroachment that was there previously. And it's a pretty significant amount of encroachment. There was deck, pool, pool deckings, and brick pavers, some stairs. And so all of that has been removed now. They received a special administrative permit to approve that encroachment in the stream buffer. That was AP twenty dash oh nine. One of the conditions of that administrative permit did restrict them from rebuilding anything else in the buffer. Normally, people can remove and replace, but that extra restriction was placed on there, which forces them to then come to the board of appeals to get an exception to the rules. So that's what necessitated the request today. This is the site plan showing what is going to be built slash is currently under construction. The red shows the encroachment of the new deck. It's an uncovered deck. It's only around sixty-five square feet. Also, I'd like to note the setbacks are different. So this is an R one hundred lot. The typical setback is thirty-five feet. But our code, I don't know if you guys are familiar, has what's called contextual street setbacks. And so that contextual street setback requires them to align with existing houses on the block. And so it actually pushes them back six feet to forty-one feet. So that's their required setback. But they are pulled back as far forward as they possibly can be to take most of the house and everything out of the buffer. So this is just the one remaining piece that still encroaches. These are some existing conditions. The left is a picture of the vegetated buffer. On the right-hand side, this is where they removed all of that impervious previously. They are proposing to grass that area where the vegetation was removed. Overall, the buildable area on this lot, as I mentioned earlier, is restricted by, you know, both the contextual street setback and also the stream buffer. The the orientation is, you know, about as far forward as it can go. And so they're very restricted on this lot. Under typical conditions, like I mentioned earlier, this proposal wouldn't be a problem. Our, the language, the language in our code, sorry, I'm getting a little turned around here. Language in our code is very narrow in section, section sixteen dash seventy-nine. That's our section related to exemptions. So there are certain lists of things that people can do in the stream buffer without getting a variance. One of those is they are allowed to remove and replace in kind, and they can also make it smaller and bring it farther away. But in this case, because it was a complete demolition, and because they had that special administrative permit, they don't fit within that extremely narrow language of the code. But staff does think they still meet the intent of the code. They're improving the buffer by removing a significant amount of impervious surface, and they're only replacing, I mean, not even a fraction of what was there previously. And, you know, for these reasons, we are recommending approval. It's not something that's going to be detrimental to the health and the functionality of the buffer or the stream. And we just recommend that it be in substantial compliance with the with the site plan and that it has to be done within one year. It's a little bit shorter than the previous one, just because it's already under construction, so the time constraints aren't as significant on this one, since it's already being built. I'm available for questions if you guys have any.
Great, thanks. Mr. Ginberg, you're on Zoom. Would you like to speak to the board and state your case as well?
Yes, please. Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. As Madeline so eloquently presented, we first of all, I guess, Daniel Ginberg, ten forty-one Winding Ridge Court, for the record. We I grew up in Dunwoody for, born, born, raised, want to move back close to, close to the family. And we bought this lot last year. We, we as Madeline mentioned, we applied for a special administrative permit to encroach into the buffer to demo the existing pool and deck. That was approximately eleven hundred square feet impervious pool service sidewalk area and deck decking that was encroaching into the seventy-five-foot stream buffer. We originally thought the, the condition from that approval was going to be okay, that we couldn't build back into the buffer, because we were, we, we were not planning appropriately for that contextual setback. Our original site plan with their house further closer to the road would have pulled that, that, that sixty-five square feet out of the, the buffer. But when we ran into that setback requirement, that pushed us in, pushed us to encroach into that buffer. So I don't want to take up too much of your time. I thought Madeline did a great job presenting, and I'm available with any questions that you may have.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Ginberg. Anyone else? Anyone else want to speak in favor of this application? Anyone want to speak in opposition? All right, we'll close to public comment. Open up to board questions. Board? I got a quick question for, for staff. So I should remember this, but if it's, so you really had two chances, two variants. You could either request a variance for the contextual setback, right, or the, or for the deck in the back. What would happen if they, I mean, obviously chose to adhere to the contextual setback, which is six feet, which, like you said, would have brought him up. So what was it? So just curious, the discussion to do either one. Would he have to do a variance? Would that be the same process typically, right? We've seen contextual variance, variances, right? So he had his option, I guess, which one to do. That's fair, fair statement. Just.
Yes, so he technically, technically could have requested variance from the setbacks or a stream buffer variance. The criteria are just a little bit different.
Okay, okay. Thanks. Well, in general, it's obviously the, the impervious situation has been improved dramatically, right? And the encroachment is negligible. I mean, it's eight feet, basically, or sixty-four square feet, right? So it's pretty negligible. So it's, 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 I think the staff did a nice job of summarizing that and the inconsequential effects to the stream buffer. So that's just my two cents, but anybody else?
So just to staff, so the part of the site plan in, because I didn't see it, maybe I didn't read it that far, is to do we have the materials that they're going to replace? Is it just grass is what they're going to, all the pervious surface that they took out? Is it just grass that we're looking at, or is there something else required?
It's just grass. It's sod.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you.
Any other questions, anyone? Do I have a motion?
I motion to approve with staff conditions. I move to approve the request for variance from chapter sixteen, section seventy-eight to allow a deck to encroach into the stream buffer, subject to the following conditions as provided by staff. The desk, the deck must be in substantial compliance with the site plan dated March tenth, twenty twenty-one. If construction has not commenced within one year of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void.
Second.
We have first and a second. All those in favor? All right, it's approved.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Actually, I was looking for the one-year part. That's what I was looking at. That's, that's what I was, sorry. I was checking that, because that would differ from. Yes, yeah, yeah, I got that. All right, board, that's it for this evening. Unless there's any other board comment? No? Public, no, no public comment? Public, no, no public comment? Now they, we've tried that a couple times. All right, thank you all, this meeting is adjourned.